Good morning. It is 10:33 on the 17th of April. The council has just concluded our first work session this morning, and we are now starting the second one. With that, let's go forward with the Heritage Farm Sustainability Plan. I'm going to hand it over to Public Works.
Is it working? It's just my voice today, sorry. Those trees, they're bad. They're really bad.
Hey, Herb.
This is Rocky Houston with Parks and Lands, and I'm going to turn it over to Lindy.
Thank you, Rocky. So I'm Lindy Wallach, Park and Trails Planner with Parks and Lands. And David Stipe is also with us here. He's our Planning and Development Manager. We've been working on the 78th Street Heritage Farm Sustainability Plan for a number of years. Today, if we go on to the next slide, I will give you an update on our progress on plan development that we've made to date. We'll take a look at the public engagement that we've done for the development of the plan. I'll give you an overview of the sustainability plan and talk about the next steps for implementation. So, starting off in the spring of 2022, we kicked off our project with a visit to our park advisory board and here to the council to confirm the project goals and expectations. And we presented our plan for the makeup of a steering committee that we had planned to help us guide the development of the plan. We felt this was important because most staff of working on the project was new at that time, and it had been some time that had elapsed since the direction had been provided during the master plan adoption or update adoption in 2020 for us to develop a business plan for Heritage Farm. We established at those meetings, our goals were confirmed to increase public access to Heritage Farm and to improve financial sustainability by reducing the draw on the general fund for the farm's expenses. And also, just to make sure that we're implementing our approved master plan while we do that. We also made tweaks to our project steering committee based on feedback that we received at those meetings. In October of 2022, we held our first steering committee. We started with background information, or steering committee meeting. We started with background information sessions so that all of the participants from the steering committee could kind of start off with more of a level playing field. We had some folks who didn't have a lot of experience with Heritage Farm because we had tried to create a more inclusive steering committee. So we provided them with tours of the farm and the properties. We provided them with information about the farm's history, about the current uses. We went with a pretty in-depth view of the current uses of the farm, our annual expenses for the farm, and the potential uses that they could consider when we developed the plan based on local regional and economic analysis that were performed by consultants. In December of 2022, we hosted our first of two open houses, and we opened a community survey. That first open house was really just to make the public more aware of the project and to encourage participation in that community survey. In spring of 2023, we had, I believe, our fifth steering committee meeting, which was a workshop that we conducted where the committee worked in small groups to develop alternatives for analysis in the plan. And then, over the summer and fall of last year, Park Planning reviewed all of the information that we gathered through our public engagement process and through that workshop to develop a draft master plan that we shared with the steering committee in December of last year. We presented the draft plan to the public at our second open house this past January and opened a public comment period that ended February 23rd. We reviewed the feedback that we received at the open house and through the comment period and made some minor adjustments to that draft plan. We took that to the park advisory board and also to the Heritage Farm advisory team. The PAB voted unanimously to recommend that we move forward to council to request adoption or consideration for adoption, and so that's why we're here. And when we met with the Heritage Farm advisory team, they don't really have an option to take action on the plan, but they did provide a lot of positive feedback in support of the plan. Next slide. So this is a look at our public engagement process. We developed a public engagement strategy that focused on the inclusion of voices from current farm partners, the agribusiness community at large, educational leaders in our community, as well as folks who aren't currently using the farm, but that we felt that might be able to if there were different opportunities that existed. We engaged the services of consort engineering, which is a consultant that we hired to assist us with the development of our engagement strategy. And they also facilitated some of our initial steering committee meetings and other engagement elements just to help the public be reassured that the county wasn't trying to overly influence the outcomes of the plan. We developed a stakeholder list of over 250 community members over time. We started with the folks who had already participated in earlier attempts to develop a business plan, but we added those that were interested in the work that we were doing along the way. So we provided regular communication to them, mostly through email and a few other methods. But we kept them up to date on the plan progress that we had made. We let them know about next steps. We informed them of opportunities to participate in the public process. And then, the steering committee that we had was established, I'm sorry, the steering committee that we had was made up of a county operations representative who operates or helps operate and manage Heritage Farm, park advisory board member, member of the Heritage Farm advisory team. We had the interim director for WSU Extension Services, representative from the Vancouver School District, Clark Conservation District, the NAACP Latinos Junios y Floraciendo, which we know a little bit better, I think it's LULAC, Visit Vancouver Wa, the Tourism Agency, Northeast Hazeldale Neighborhood Association, and the Hazeldale Salmon Creek Business Association. We also invited the Kailits Tribe to participate in the steering committee, and they declined, but they did participate in a community, or the chairwoman participated in a community interview, or yeah, interview, that we were able to consider their opinions as we move forward with plan development. And then, we had, as I said earlier, we had six total meetings, and the last of which was this last January where we discussed the draft plan with them. In December, as I said, in December of 2022, we had that first of the two open houses. And not only did we present the idea of the plan that we were developing, but we also reviewed basic information about the approved adopted, I'm sorry, the adopted master plan from 2020 or the update. Because it'd been kind of a while since we'd had conversations with the community about the farm, and we just wanted to make sure everybody remembered the plan that had been adopted. We also discussed and encouraged folks to participate in the community survey that we opened at that time. And we invited all of the current farm partners who are operating programs there or leasing space to set up information stations at that meeting. And that gave the opportunities for attendees to interact with those folks and learn more about the good work that's happening at the farm already. And then, our second open house, we reviewed the developed plan, our process that we used to develop the plan, our public engagement strategy, and then we asked for comments on the plan. And just to note, we had about 80 people who attended both of those open houses, so we had pretty good turnout. Our community survey that we had around the first open house, we had over 1,100 community members respond to that survey. And around 35% of those folks are people who aren't currently participating in programs at the farm or who didn't know a whole lot about the farm. And so, we were happy that we received a lot more opinion and input from folks who aren't already out there and in the mix. And then, consort engineering also conducted 10 community leader interviews for us in December and January, or December 2022, January 2023. And then, that public comment period that we had, we had focused comment periods around our open house, but really, we accepted all comments that we received in writing over the duration of the project. And we shared all of that information, including the survey and interview, detailed survey and interview information with our steering committee and reviewed all of that as we developed our plan. All right, so here's a look at our plan. It does include even more information on our public process than I've already discussed. It has a lot of background information and context surrounding Heritage Farm. We take a look at cultural and historical resources and do more of a deep dive in those current uses. We look at past planning studies that have been completed, and planning and studies that have been completed on the project or on the site. We look at the master plan and its update. We look at the park and recreation, park recreation and open space plan, which does have goals for Heritage Farm in it. We looked at the WSU Metro Center's Operational Recommendations Report that they provided to us in spring, or I think it was April of 2022. And then, we also provide a financial analysis, which looked at our county's expenditures and the volunteer contributions that come in annually to the farm. We were able to share with the steering committee, and it's reflected in the plan that Parks and Lands averages about $170,000 a year in expenses to operate the farm. Of course, that's outside of the agreement with WSU Extension to provide extension services for the county. For volunteer contributions, the information provided here and in the plan is from 2023. But during our plan development process, we were really looking at information from 2021 and 2020. And this comes from the Heritage Farm advisory team. They track all of this information and shared it with us. So in 2023, over 14,000 volunteer hours were recorded at Heritage Farm. And I know they believe that even more occurred there, but that's what they can account for. And in addition, over $300,000 in private monetary contributions were made to support farm programs. And that led to over $130,000, I'm sorry, 130,000 pounds of produce to be donated to local food banks. And we often mostly think of the Clark County Food Bank, but there are other food banks that that goes to support, which benefits around 200,000 residents of Clark County. It's a large number. And then, we also think it's important to note that the volunteer labor and the money donations, or monetary donations, they don't only benefit families experiencing food insecurity, but those programs at Heritage Farm also benefit gardeners and farmers, students, kids in the juvenile justice system, and local youth groups. These programs enhance leadership and job skills. They improve self-sufficiency and the environment. And without the labor and those additional monetary or financial contributions, those types of programs at Heritage Farm wouldn't be possible. The next slide. So the plan also includes a site analysis. We look at three distinct environmental and use zones. Zone one is agricultural operations and support areas, which takes up about 19 acres of the site. Those are active agricultural areas and then shops and greenhouses that go to support that. Zone two are fallow landslides that are less than 15%. That takes up about 37 total acres. And there's, I'm sorry, there's 79.8 acres in total at the site. So 37% of, or 37 acres of that are fallow landslides. And six of those acres are going to be incorporated into the wetland restoration project that's coming up next year. And then, five of those acres are going to be reserved for the northeast corner, public access improvements that are reflected in the adopted master plan. So that 37 acres is reduced just a hair as well. By about a third. And then, zone three, we consider it encumbered land. That takes up about 23 acres. This is forested land, wetlands, or areas with historical significance, like the historic cemetery. So those are areas that we wouldn't develop or that would have some sort of regulation that tied to them that would make them difficult for development, not that we would develop the cemetery or disturb it. And then, we also in the plan address topographic constraints. We recognize that there are steep slopes on the southern portion of the property, and that can really impact the type of crop, crop types that can be grown there. Not necessarily that they can't completely be used, but that there might be specialized equipment or only specific types of crops that can grow in that area. For fallow, we also look at fallow land, and we recognize that the area around Cougar Creek, where the wetland restoration project is going to occur at the north end of the farm, those areas have been inactive for a long period of time. And we understand that lack of use can create issues with weeds and soil nutrient issues that need to be overcome before they can be put into production. We looked at surrounding land use, and we understand that farming in an urban area surrounded by lots of residential properties and commercial properties, that can limit options for the site. It might not be appropriate to have hogs in the middle of Hazeldale. It might not be, and the pool of farmers that might be interested in farming that land could be reduced because it's a little bit more difficult to move agricultural equipment around, or farming equipment around on 78th Street and 68th Street than it is in a rural area, where harder to get multiple properties in the same area to manage at the same time for economy and scale. But we do recognize that the property is a high-value agricultural site because of its high-quality soils, and it has onsite water availability. Now, I'll take a look at plan alternatives. And as I touched on earlier, in March of 2023, we had our steering committee workshop where we developed, we asked the steering committee to self-select into groups to develop alternatives for consideration and plan development. The way we went about that was that we provided them with a menu of programmatic or programming elements and cost recovery options that they could consider for inclusion in their alternatives. And then, they were also able to add to that menu that we provided to them. The list of programming elements and cost recovery options that we provided to them were derived from survey feedback that we had from the WSU Operations Recommendations Report and also even from comments that were made at previous council meetings. So they had pretty much every idea that anybody had suggested to us to choose from. And their job was to compare that to the goals that were established for this plan and making sure that the alternatives proposed meet the goals of this plan development and then also the guiding principles that are included in the adopted master plan. I think there's nine guiding principles that we have to consider for any programming that exists at Heritage Farm. So the steering committee, when they worked together, they ended up self-selecting into six groups. And when we looked at the feedback that we received from them, there was a lot of consistency. There was a lot of the same programs and cost recovery options that were being selected over and over again. And so, we funneled those all into alternative three, which is our preferred alternative. But there were two additional alternatives that the steering committee felt were important to consider in the plan's alternative analysis. And so, the first of which is we would consider same, same. And that's continuing to operate the farm in its current manner with some modifications to those revenue generation options that planning had suggested and also some from the steering committee. This alternative does fall short of meeting the financial and public access goals that are in the, I'm sorry, that are in the, that were set forth for the requirements for the development of the plan. But there was a lot of interest from the steering committee and it being considered in this alternative analysis because there's a lot of interest from current farm partners to continue to operate the farm with little or no change. So we agreed that we would include that as an alternative for consideration. Alternative two is what we would consider an NGO-operated version or alternative for the farm. There were a few members of the steering committee who were interested in an alternative that includes management by a third party. This would require an RFP, a request for proposal, to be issued to seek selection of a third party. And this alternative was largely discounted by most of the steering committee members because of the unknowns that come with negotiating and contracting with an NGO. And that primary challenge that they saw was the identification of a partner with the financial capacity to operate the farm in a manner that meets those guiding principles from the master plan, but not use the county-provided subsidy. So alternative three is our preferred alternative. And as I said, it's kind of an amalgamation of those six alternatives that the steering committee developed last year at that spring workshop. This alternative proposes inclusion of fully open public access facilities so that Heritage Farm can function more like an agriculturally-focused community park. We would separate recreational elements from active ag areas to purposeful design, which we recognize looks like revised farming or fencing plans and landscaping plans. Operational expenses would be primarily shifted from the general fund to the Metropolitan Park District Fund that the county uses for neighborhood and community parks. And this will provide access to staff outside of the farm specialist position. There's one person who's posted at the farm full-time to help with maintenance and operation there. And then, would also bring in other resources from parks. This alternative meets all of the criteria and the project goals. And though we understand it doesn't entirely offset the draw on the county's financial resources, it does decrease or potentially eliminate the need for general fund. This is a little bit more of a look at alternative three. If we look, the programming options or elements that we suggested are in the red, the purple, and the orange color. And cost recovery looks yellow here, but it's kind of a green color. So under red, we have agricultural programming elements. And a lot of those are what we already see at the farm. The first is WSU Extension Services, which we require to be a part of any alternative that was proposed for the plan development. But we also see programs like the community gardens or agricultural lease space. We see food production for underserved communities and horticulture education programming, farm historic tours, and composting education. So programs are already happening there. But we've added programs that we're not seeing right now, which are incubator farming programming, or incubator farming programs, a farm stand or vendor lease space, farm and park amenities, which is a suggestion that Park Planning added, et cetera. Oh, and farm-to-table programming. For educational programmatic elements, we have the community outdoor classroom, which is something that we've had some very early conversations with WSU Extension about, making that more of a public asset or publicly accessible asset. And then, school district programming. There's a continued vision of having every student in the school district to be able to come out to the, come out to the farm at some time during their school career and learn more about where their food comes from, all the hard work that goes into that, and then putting that in their minds for the future and where is their food going to come from years from now. And then, finally, for programmatic elements, we have recreational options, which include community trails that are open to the public, which is already included in our master plan update. And Park Planning has added a children's play area. This, along with the farm park amenities, were not necessarily supported by the steering committee, but we felt that both of those items would draw families and folks from the community out to the farm. And then, when they're exploring the play area or other trails, that they would be able to look across that newly-revised fence and see all of the great things that are happening beyond there and hopefully draw their interest to try to get involved in those types of programs like community gardens and other great youth programs that are happening. For cost recovery elements, we start with the general fund. We had a lot of feedback through our survey and through community leader interviews that the public generally thinks there's always going to be some level of general fund support to sustain Heritage Farm over the years. But we also have the Metropolitan Park District Fund that I touched on earlier. We have lease adjustments and fee for farm services, which are programs that Rocky and other Heritage Farm operations staff are working on developing. We have Friends of the Farm fundraising. We've had some conversation with them, and they're eager, happy for us to get a plan adopted so that can help them focus their fundraising efforts on specific types of capital investment or programming investments. The steering committee wanted to include Educational Institute partnership, but we recognize the climate today. It's difficult for our public school districts to fund their own operation, let alone to invest in other opportunities. But perhaps there's options or opportunities at the state level or maybe even from private educational institutes. And then, grants is another big item on this list. When we, if we're able to open the farm property to more public access or more unfettered public access, we would also be open to, or make the property more eligible for additional grants, at least through the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, which has grants that they provide for recreation, but also agriculture and educational programs. And so, we feel that there's a great opportunity there for the future. We have donations and revenue percentage from sole items. And another item that Park Planning added but wasn't necessarily supported by the steering committee was the Vancouver Clark County Leaf Litter Composting and Sale Program, which is a program that was suggested by our folks in the composting education program in public health that potentially we could create such an area of the farm where we could collect or bring leaf litter that's currently taken to private organizations through contracts that the city and the county have that could come to the property and be composted and then sold back as mulch. And that's something that we really need to do some analysis on and really confirm that it fits with the guiding principles of the master plan before we would pursue that. And then, the next slide. So this takes a look at the next steps from our plan. These are really focused on implementation of the plan. And the first three, and they are a summary of what's in the plan. There's a little more detail there. But the first three are all kind of tied together. It's improved relationships with existing farm partners, improved inclusion and equity in farm access to historically underrepresented groups in our community to build on the trust that was developed during the development of this plan. And so, we have tried to bring in voices of people who maybe haven't been heard at Heritage Farm during this process, and we want to continue that as we move forward. But at the same time, we want to keep working on the, continuing the hard work that we've done to improve our relationships with folks who are out there, build trust with them. I think if you compare our first open house and our initial steering committee meetings and the tone of those meetings versus our final, our last steering committee meeting and our last open house, there's just a different tone all over, overall, a confidence, I think, in us that we're doing the right thing at the farm and we have a good view of our vision for the future of the farm. Number four is to explore additional farm partner relationships. Of course, as I've alluded to earlier, we'd always be looking back to those guiding principles in the master plan to make sure that they fit anybody, any programs that are added to the farm that they fit with that. And then, five and six are kind of tied together, and that's that land lease program and a fee-for-service program that Rocky and other staff are working on. And also, seven is to analyze current cost sharing and operational relationships. So that's to, I think, create efficiencies between parks and the farm for overall hopeful reduction in costs or share the costs. And then, eight and nine are kind of tied together, and that's to develop a first phase of public access improvements. And while we're doing that, to make sure we're keeping safety and security in mind for the current farm partners of the lease spaces there now. And so, we are in early talks to talk about public access from the south end of the site through a potential trail to the cemetery and an accessible interpretive trail up to the cemetery and then also up to the top of the hill so you can see over towards the north end of the farm. And then, once the wetland restoration work is completed, we would look at trail feasibility and access from the northeast corner of the site. But those are all feasibility studies that we're talking on now. And while we're, while we're just starting all of that, we're already having conversations with those current farm partners just to make sure that they understand what we're doing because when we talk about that, there's a lot of hesitation from them. What's that going to look like for them? And are we considering their concerns? So we're really trying to listen to them, have those hard conversations, and try to validate their concerns where we can and incorporate changes that we need to into any design work that we have in the future. But of course, we would be having those conversations throughout design, not just at the beginning. And the last we have here is to explore additional revenue options, and that's things like that leaf litter program. So that's all I have prepared in my presentation today. We are hopeful that you'll consider the information we've provided, and we hope to be able to come back in a few weeks able to come back in a few weeks or as appropriate to have a hearing and hopefully seek adoption of the plan.
Are there any questions from council? Chair, just a comment. Yes, go ahead. Which one of us? Councilor Berman, go for it.
All righty. I just wanted to say with regard to slide five, with whatever you have coming up in the near future for press releases, this information is dynamite for being out in the public, and I would love to see it. And pardon me if you've done this already and I haven't seen it, but I think this would be dynamite to include in press releases that go out, because it's a way of saying thank you to those who volunteer at Heritage Farm. Beautiful way.
Counselor, thank you. That's a great idea. I sound like I'm very bad.
Do you want me to talk about it?
Please.
Okay. So, we've been sharing that information with our communications group in Public Works and our, okay. So, we've been sharing the information along with other events that are happening at the farm, trying to incorporate that into social media posts and other news releases. And also, we have a calendar that is on the website that we're trying to populate with farm events, just try to consolidate those from a lot of the different farm partners, because that hasn't really been done in the past. But a place for them to all come and look at what's going on at the farm in one place.
Well, I love seeing the results, and that is just real testimony to what's accomplished.
Thank you.
Are there questions from council?
I have a few.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thanks so much for this. I was at, I think I might have been at the last open house, and I would attest to the change in tone, and I think some relief that this was now moving forward. And also, you know, that you just acknowledged that there was a lot of distrust that you had to overcome, and that there's still maybe some of that lingering. But when the public feels like they aren't being given all the information from several years ago, that it takes a lot to overcome that. And I do believe it's because it's really held in such high regard, and all of the components and the folks involved with those components care so deeply about it. And there was an element of fear that their part of it would be undermined in some way. So, thanks for all of the work to build that trust. But just a couple of comments related to that 170,000 annual expense. Is there any kind of a breakdown, or is that a pretty solid number that is the expense?
The breakdown of that is included in the plan, and a majority of that comes from the farm specialist position and other folks who help the farm specialists with maintenance and operation of the farm. And then, there were capital investments that were made over, I think we looked at a five-year period, five-year period in the plan, and so that's included in that as well, averaged out over.
I think there was a roof that was replaced or something.
That project was not part of this. It's working now. It was irrigation improvement was the key project. So, there's about 128,000, that is services and supplies and primarily staffing that is that. And then, we averaged that capital project in there.
Great. And so, with the, moving towards the Metropolitan Park District Fund, would that alleviate or lessen that 170, if that is a shared staffing kind of arrangement?
So, it'd be, we'd be diversifying the fund, so it would reduce the burden or responsibility on general fund, not reduce the cost. We clearly identified that this asset and assets like it require a lot of support. There is no model out there that we've seen that high-cost recovery. And as such, because of the benefits and hundreds of activities that are already occurring there, it is, we want to continue to invest it. And what the MPD funds will allow us to do and other funds is diversify the ability to do some of the implementation of the master plan. So, some of the projects that were referenced that allows us to utilize those other funds that, again, isn't solely on a grant or general funding. And so, it really just opens the window to move forward the master plan we have in place. There will be some actions, of course, we'd have to go through if it was to be an MPD asset, and if we do have an adopted plan, we will work through that process. Additionally, there was an interest in having a conservation covenant over the site. We've done a lot of review with that. I believe we'll be coming back to council with that. We created a memo to do that, and we're determining the best way to engage for the next steps with council on that.
Great. That was my next question. I was going to channel Counselor Medvee on that. You know, I've been talking to the director of the historical museum and came to learn that the entire site is a historic site. And it's not a conservation easement, but I would think that that would hold some protection, some pretty important protection for the entire site.
Can I say, so it is a historic district. It's registered in the National Registry of Historic Places, and it's also registered in the state and the county. And we have been providing updates on our project development, our plan development to Historic Preservation Commission. And any work that we have to do out there, whenever we have to file for a permit, we have to make sure that we approach the Historic Preservation Commission and discuss whatever those projects might look like. So, even at Hazeldale Farm, that's included, or I'm sorry, Hazeldale Park, that's included in that historic district. So, work that we do out there, we have to touch base with them.
I'm thinking there could be opportunities related to the historical museum and really, because it is, you know, there's stories to be told, and, you know, the remnants of these buildings and could be incorporated into the trail and interpretation that is done. So, I just want to stay open to those opportunities. In terms of, just a thought I have related to, you know, all the programming, all the programming sounds really quite wonderful. I've always thought that if you want it to be more self-sufficient, you've got to invest more for that to occur, because if there's grants or whatever, I know the Extension Service does some programming, but, you know, they have a limited staff, and I feel what was lacking was really some kind of centralized leadership that could represent all of the different uses of the farm. And that would take, you know, to do these programs, will take additional staff. And that leads me to thinking about that nonprofit, and there's no nonprofit, you know, ready to jump up and take this on. But there could be partnerships that are developed in the future that could provide some of that leadership and maybe some flexibility in bringing in some additional resources. And I'm happy to hear about the south end and that steep slope, and having a trail that goes up, because it's at the cemetery where you get that spectacular view. So, I think expanding the potential access points from the south and from the east. And I know there's that additional parcel that we've acquired, that you're probably still figuring out exactly how to handle that. But I think there's great potential there. And then, just to say, you know, from the farmer's perspective, this resource is really in the work, you know, as far as assisting the farm community, this resource is really largely in the work that WSU Extension Service does in their programming and research and protecting that aspect of it. I think it's fundamentally an important component of why this still exists in the community. So, good work trying to balance all of these different interests, and I'm excited to see it go forward.
Other comments?
Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Yan.
So, first of all, I want to say congratulations on facilitating a successful advisory group in Clark County. That seems to be tough, tough job to do right now. And I really appreciate your attention and your thoughtful process of trying to be inclusive. And 1,000 people, or 1,100, I think you said, that's a pretty good number. And you got, you managed to capture about a third of people that aren't interested, you know, typically in the farm. So, I think that's great work. Could we go back to slide five again, please? So, I did have just a couple of questions. Is this, the 170,000 a year, is that based on the plan moving forward, or is that what our current expense is, or will it stay the same?
That's averaged over the last five years, so it's not a projected.
Okay.
And currently, we're not planning to change the budget amount. It's just look at different funds.
Okay. And then, is this the entirety of it? I mean, can we look at this is how much it costs us, and then this is the value of volunteer hours, this is the value of private contribution? But this pays for other things than just the food production that comes out of it, isn't that correct?
So, our staffing is primarily for the operation of the agricultural inside-the-fence element. There is other county funds spent here to maintain the administrative building, referenced with the WSU. So, we have in-kind work there, county funds as well as an allocation. So, there is a lot of additional funds going in to support WSU Extension Services. In addition, they have a lot of support from WSU and other funding sources to make it complete. So, we're just a slice of pie of their stuff as well. So, if we started to pull it back out, there is a lot more money invested on the 80 acres. But our 170 is just focused on that farm specialist and sort of just making sure that the ground is tilled, we're mowing, we're doing those sort of farming activities out there. And moving forward, it just allows us to have, our model is to have a team move around to several properties, not be stationed on just one, to maximize our efficiencies. And that allows this. So, example is, we had a gravelling project, so we were there for three hours, dumped a bunch of gravel, leveled it out, instead of spending a day or two or three with one person doing that work. And so, that just allows us that economy of scale that was referenced earlier as we move forward, as in increasing it, the budget. Of course, we'd always like to do that, and there's a lot of suggestions that came through the process of having a coordinator, kind of you're referencing, to sort of manage a lot of that stuff and be that core. But our intent, moving forward in the direction we had, was to try to look at reducing general fund and maximizing those other partnerships, and not looking at this time at increasing sort of that investment through the general fund. However, as the future goes forward, we're open, we're just excited to move from planning into implementing. And that's a good implementation item for us to ponder as we move forward.
Yes, so, great job with this, and I'm really looking forward to seeing it go, and I'm very supportive of the program and the work that we're doing here. Just a couple of things that I did want to point out, though, just kind of my more cynical kind of fiscal look at this, is you look at, you know, 930,000 or roughly what I came up in value and contributions and volunteer hours, and then you come up with 170,000 a year, or no, sorry, where was that? The value of the food was?
292.
292. So, just, that's kind of my more cynical eye. Kind of the point I'm trying to make is that more comes of this than just the food production. And so, if we kind of release this information, I would love to have some tidbits on some of the other stuff that we're providing the community, other benefits that are not necessarily financially tangible. And then, I was curious about the shift from the general fund to Parks District. Did I hear that right, that we were, the 170,000, we were going to shift from the general fund to the parks?
Yes, that is the proposal is there. And so, it's within our Greater Clark Park District boundary. It is an asset that would be for the master plan, and it's used as a community park, so it would meet that function. And where it comes down is the nit-gritty of it is, is it all 80 acres, is it 40 acres? And there's some of that process we'd look at in regards to that allocation, and that would move, we would be working with other departments here in the county if we do move forward with that assessment.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just kind of curious. One of the things that I want to make sure of is that, you know, the makeup of the council can always change. We have a council right now that is super supportive of Heritage Farm. That may not always be the case. And then, there's also budget cuts when they come up, you know. So, I'm very interested in trying to protect this program from something like that in the future. I think the parks, you know, taking it out of the Parks District kind of helps, you know, alleviate that pressure from the general fund. But I'm also, at the same time, kind of concerned, is this, I don't want to short-change our parks program by dumping this additional expense onto it. So, just curious what your thoughts are on that.
Well, we are developing our nine-step to come to another work session, talking about our financial levy lift, lid lift, or other opportunities within the Greater Clark Park District. We have funding, it is stable. However, not just this asset, but all of our assets and more people, more properties we develop, there are more requirements for it. And so, that is something that we are still working through and a different decision, and may influence what we actually implement here, based off of council's direction on those opportunities. But it is a more stable fund in regards to the other things. We currently have a reserve that we are monitoring, utilizing it. Currently, we are in the red, so our operation is exceeding our revenues, but it is manageable for foreseeable future. However, we're at that point where we need to start looking on how to steer the ship the right way, because everything is very slow.
Yeah, and I appreciate that discussion, because there's a fine line, like, I do believe with this, that it's for the greater good, and it is worth the community investment in that. But again, I also want to safeguard it from the risk of being cut in the future. So, finding that balance between, you know, revenue that can sustain the project and public investment, just kind of walking that line. We don't want to go too far and try to fund the entire thing to where we lose some of the richness of the program and things like that. But we also need to keep it secure. So, I appreciate you looking at that and looking at the new ways of potentially generating revenue at the location. So, very good. Thank you. I appreciate the update on it.
I have a comment. Rocky, don't talk. Lindy, maybe you can answer this question. Can you go to the, not, the second to the last slide with the bullet points on there? I have a question on one of them. Not that one, the one, yes, that one. Number nine, developing a safety and security plan associated with public access. Did that have something to do with maybe potentially threatening the historical integrity of the farm? Is that what the concern was? I believe I saw some email traffic. I just can't remember.
No, that is tied to the public access or future public access improvements and the concerns that existing farm users have of bringing more folks onto the farm. They're concerned about potential vandalism and theft of their farming areas. And so, that's where I was talking about the conversations that we've been having, and starting with listening, well, we started with a listening session a month or two ago, I think in February, just so we can hear their concerns and consider that as we start talking about the actual design of these access improvements.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted some further clarification. That's my only comment. Are there any other additional questions from the council?
Just one last thought from me when we're talking about funding. I know with funding, you know, the source of the funding can kind of then direct and limit what is done as far as programming. And I think some of the concern I have heard that, well, it's not a park, it's a farm, so there's, will always be, I think, a little tension related to that, and it's not, not quite a park, and it is a farm, and, you know, so that will need to be juggled. And I think diversification of the funding, if it all comes from parks. I think gardening is an excellent park activity, actually. But you got your work cut out for you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments further from the council, we will adjourn this work session.